Okay, let's call this meeting to order and stand for the pledge.
You really want to stand up?
Well, because then you'll see my belly button. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic.
For which it stands.
For which it stands.
One nation.
Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, Mr. Brennan.
Honorable Mayor Ron Schaber.
Present.
Councilmember Brian Ernie Alice.
Here.
Doug Shasso. I see him. Allison Howe.
Here.
Here.
Clint Anderson.
Here.
Lynn Deal.
Here.
Kevin Lindell.
Present.
Okay. Okay. First item is approval of the minutes for our March seventeenth, twenty twenty council regular meeting. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Your Honor. The draft of those minutes was included in your packet and presented for your approval by resolution.
Has everybody had a chance to review them? And is there any corrections or revisions?
They look good, Your Honor.
Seeing none, I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to accept the minutes from the March seventeenth council meeting.
Second.
Second.
I have a resolution by Allison Howe and a second by Clint Anderson. All in favor, vote by roll call.
That carries unanimously.
Is it easier to raise our hands, John?
Yeah, I think so, but it might, just in case, you know, the screen kind of shifts around, if you would ask for any opposed afterwards, just in case.
Any opposed to that? Seeing none. Next is a reading of a proclamation designating April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whereas in the United States, April is a Sexual Assault Awareness Month. The goal is to raise public awareness about sexual violence and educate community on how to prevent it. Awareness calls attention to the fact that sexual harassment, assault, and abuse are widespread and impact every person in this community. And whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment harm our community, the statistics show one in five women and one in sixty-seven men will be raped at some point in their lives. On campus, one in five women and one in sixteen men are sexually assaulted during their time in college. While ninety percent, ninety-seven percent of the homeless females and several mental illnesses and eighty-three percent of developmentally disabled women have been sexually assaulted. And whereas this year Sexual Assault Awareness Month is celebrating its nineteenth anniversary, the theme for this year's campaign, "I Ask," helps empower all of those who put consent into practice. Now, therefore, I, Ron Schaber, Mayor of the City of Fort Morgan, State of Colorado, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. We join advocates and communities across the country to take action to prevent sexual violence. April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and each day of the year is an opportunity to create change for the future. Who do I hand this to?
Your first.
It won't be part of it.
Sorry, I was muted. I have a formal copy here that I'll have you sign and we'll get to Sarah House.
Okay. Next on the agenda is a public hearing for the consideration of an application for a special use permit for a home-based business at two-two-twenty-seven Apache Street. This is a public hearing. Please keep public comments to the issues before the council. Each speaker is asked to limit comment time to three minutes unless the speaker represents a group of citizens, in which event additional time may be allocated. Please respect these limitations, as I reserve the right to limit public comment that is inappropriate under these guidelines or otherwise improper. I also reserve the right to limit testimony or questioning that is repetitive, cumulative, argumentative, or not pertinent to the issues, and to set a limit on the duration of testimony if I determine it determine it to be necessary in light of the number of people who have signed up to testify. First is legal issue. Mr. Brennan, was the hearing properly noticed?
I can't hear it.
I think you're muted, John.
Sorry. Yes, a legal notice of this public hearing appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on March nineteenth.
Okay. Next is presentation of the application. Mr. Glamire.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. What you have in your packet tonight is a case for a special use permit for a home business. This is for a business that's providing photography services at two-twenty-seven Apache Street. The applicant owner is Sheena Hayes. Sheena is online tonight if you have questions of her. We're conducting this review tonight as the property is in an R-two zoning district, which only allows a home business by special use. The planning commission did review this case at a regular public meeting on March the twenty-third. We did not receive any comments for or against on the case, just questions and answers from the applicant. And the planning commission did unanimously recommend approval of the case to the city council tonight. The owner proposes to operate a photography studio and office. This is to provide photography for families, children, newborns, this type of thing, and also to have an office to be able to do client orders and the like. It is proposed to be operated out of an accessory structure. That is a structure in the backyard. The applicants provided a sketch in your packet so that you can see the location. They do have additional parking that's required as a home business. And staff did review the criteria. You have that in your packet. We don't find that this will have any negative impact on the adjacent properties. We would ask the council to consider the criteria that's in the for approval or denial of this case. We did receive one comment after the planning commission meeting, and it was really more just a question about utilities for a home business. Why has there been no comments for or against the case? So based on that, staff would recommend approval of case twenty-dash-zero-five-SU, a special use permit for a home business, as was recommended by the planning mission, subject to the following, that the special use is personal to the applicants and may not be inherited, and that the owners would meet all the additional requirements for a home business as outlined in the code. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on the case tonight.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Glamire?
The applicants done everything we asked of them?
Yes, they have.
Okay. I'm okay.
Okay, anybody else?
I was just excited to, if any, neighbors were for or against, but it seems like they're pretty neutral, so that's all I wanted to learn tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
Next. Comments from the applicant, if any. Does the applicant wish to address counsel? Evidently not. Okay. Next, we'll hear public comment. Is there anybody in the public wishes to speak on this issue?
Mayor, I did just receive a chat that says that. Yeah, Sheena was not able to speak, so. Okay, I don't know, Nelson, if you need to allow her the opportunity to speak. There she is.
Okay, she's unmuted.
I don't have anything to say, other than it's just back in a back building and everything will just be by appointment only.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's good we can hear you.
Thanks.
Okay. Back to public comment. Is there anybody in the public who wishes to speak to this? Seeing none, I would ask the city clerk if any oral written comments were submitted to your office prior to this hearing.
No, no, Your Honor.
We'll get through this, folks. Counsel discussion. Are there any questions or discussion from counsel?
None additional from me, Your Honor.
Okay. Very good. If there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Is that Ally and Kevin?
Give it to Kevin.
Yeah, sure.
Spread the wealth.
Second, who is the second?
Clint.
Clint.
Okay. I have a motion to close the public hearing from Kevin Lindell and a second by Clint Anderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Counsel action. Ms. Williams.
Yes, Council and Mayor, I would direct you to page nine of your packet, and you can, you know, maybe there can be a motion to approve or to deny this application, and I would like to note staff's recommenda- recommended conditions that are listed on the bottom of page nine.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to. Who was jumping in?
Go ahead.
Doug, do you want it? Doug, take it.
You got it. Your Honor, I make a resolution to approve the application for business at two-twenty-seven Apache.
Second.
Okay, and we are including the, it's inherent to the owners and the other amendments that Steve put in there as well, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I have a resolution by Doug Sauschow, a second by Kevin Lindell. All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Next on the agenda is a public hearing on ordinance number one-two-four-three, an ordinance approving the lease purchase financing to provide funding for the construction and equipping of a community center slash fieldhouse on city-owned property, authorizing, approving a site lease, a lease purchase agreement, and other documents related to the lease purchase financing and providing other details, parameters, and authorization in connection with the lease purchase financing. Once again, this is a public hearing, and all the parameters for the previous one will still be in place. First issue is legal notice. Mr. Brennan, was it properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor, a legal notice of this public hearing appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on March twenty-first.
Okay. Next is presentation of the ordinance. Ms. Kenny.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The ordinance is the same as it was three weeks ago when it was presented to you. The only thing is the term sheet that we referred to has been added, because now we know the terms that you agreed to. So if you look at Appendix A at the end of the ordinance, it puts in writing what the agreements are, that it's a ten million dollar loan, that it will mature in two thousand thirty-five, that it has a one-point-seven-one percent interest rate, that we have to do this by April twenty-eighth in order to be assured that we get the rate. This, this was added once we knew what the terms were, but otherwise, it's pretty much the same as what we've already discussed.
And if I could just add, Your Honor, that appendix was, we did get that in time to publish it when we published the ordinance in full after first approval, so that did go in the newspaper with all those details about the terms and the interest rate and amount, so we can still do, publish it the second time by title only if that is approved by you guys.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Kenny?
I just have a quick question about timeline. I'm Jeannie, so if we were to approve this, are they just waiting? Will they begin the process right away?
Well, they've pretty much already begun the process of getting the paperwork all done. In fact, we just had communication last night, both Nina and I, with the people doing it. They need to have us signed by the twenty-eighth of April in order to get the rate, in order to hold the rate for us.
Great, that's, I couldn't remember the date for the holding the rate. Thanks.
Yeah. Sure.
Thanks, Ally. Any other questions? Next, we'll hear a public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this issue?
If anyone does and they're muted, they can put a note in the chat box at the bottom of the screen.
Are you seeing anything, John?
No, I'm not.
Okay. There's no one who wishes to speak on this issue, I would ask the city clerk if you received any oral written comments submitted to your office prior to this meeting.
No, Your Honor.
Counsel discussion. Are there any questions from the council or discussion on this issue?
Nothing additional for me.
Okay.
Nothing for me.
Hey, I had a couple of questions, but Bren answered them for me. Earlier, I was. And there's, well, if there's no further discussion by counsel, I would entertain a motion to close or continue the public hearing.
I'll move to close.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Yes.
I have a motion by Kevin Lindell and a second by Clint Anderson. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Legal action. Or counsel action.
Yes, Mayor and Council, you have options here as normal with an ordinance to approve ordinance number twelve forty-three, deny, or to amend, and let me know if you have any questions.
Nina, for the resolution, do we, do you want all that specificity that's listed on the agenda? Or can we just approve the number of the resolution and to publish by title only?
Yes, thank you for asking. I think the number is fine unless John disagrees and then published by title only.
Yeah, I think just say the number as presented.
Thank you.
Ron mentioned that stuff in the script earlier.
And to publish by title only, yes, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Ally.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to approve the second and final reading of ordinance one-two-four-three as presented and request to publish by title only.
Second.
Second.
Okay, I have a resolution by Allison Howe and a second by Brian Ernie Alice. Vote by roll call. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Carries unanimously.
Okay. Next is a presentation of possible action on the expenditure of a records management system operating upgrade for and license cost. Chief Chrome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have for discussion, this is payment for an invoice of ten thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty-five cents for operating upgrades licensing and use of records management system. We currently have an intergovernmental agreement with Morton County to utilize a records management system called the Computer Information System or CIS. It warehouses all, the vast majority of our criminal justice records in a digital format. We've been utilizing CIS since nineteen eighty-eight, and since then, the department has, had not had to pay for any of the operating costs. You guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Currently, five local law enforcement agencies utilize the system, and beginning twenty twenty, each agency is going to pay a portion of the overall operating costs for, on a percentage basis, based on how much each of those agencies use. This was already budgeted. Again, the, we earmarked about ten thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars in the current operating and maintenance budget. In your packet, you should have two different attachments. One is the pay schedule for each of the agencies, and then the actual invoice from the county. Recommendation for staff is that the council approve the payment of the invoice for ten thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty-five cents. Are any questions? That's all I have.
Did the county pick up the, all of this prior to dividing this all out?
Yeah, there was, I don't know the exact cost per year. This year, there's a significant upgrade to allow us, really, one of the bigger things is a what we call a mobile solution. That's going to be picked up by the county, but in addition to that, the other part of the records management system, there's some significant costs, so even though this will be a yearly cost, it's estimated it won't be anywhere near the ten thousand dollars this year. So yes, they have been picking up costs up to this point, outside of software licensing, which that was paid for literally decades ago, that just have continued on.
Is that records for criminals, or what kind of records do you care?
Yes, it's all our criminal justice records by definition, essentially. It could include all our information on arrests. We also have access to the jail management system, which includes jail photos, I guess, all sorts of, basically all the reports to include, we can actually view reports from the other agencies, so. And this is a huge part of, if we didn't have it, we would not be able to manage. Every, every law enforcement agency has to have some type of records management system.
When, when somebody stops you, they can check your record?
Actually, that's, that's a different system. We can't check. This is just local records. There's a separate, separate system. A state and a nationwide system we check as well. This is just the records we input ourselves. Coincidentally enough, the information we enter into here, a lot of it goes to the state and the federal government as part of the crime data, we spoke about earlier this year in our.
Who did what and all that stuff, all the stuff you see on TV.
Yeah.
Okay. Kind of curious.
Okay, any other questions for Chief Chrome? I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution on the expenditure for records management system operating upgrade and license cost.
Second.
I have a resolution by Lynn Deal and a second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call.
Aye.
Prove. Opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone.
Next is presentation on bids for police vehicle upfits.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor and Council. I have for discussion, this is equipment purchase and installation of the equipment into three unmarked, or I'm sorry, three marked police vehicles, as well as one unmarked police vehicle. As part of the capital improvement plan, the police department annually surveys its vehicle replacement program, and part of that program, it replaces vehicles to include outfitting the vehicles with equipment. This is the second part of that. We've already, you guys have already approved the purchase of four different vehicles. Part of the equipment that goes in there is installation of a mobile radio, purchasing, installing a partition cage, emergency lighting, siren, various wiring, and also external graphics on three of the four vehicles. Again, this is a yearly thing that we do. We have budgeted forty-five thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for each of those vehicles to purchase a vehicle and also outfit the vehicles. The cost of each of those vehicles was thirty thousand four hundred dollars. The, this went out obviously to a bid, and we followed the city procurement policy. This was open for bids for approximately four weeks, beginning February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty. We have received one bids from a company out of Inglewood, Colorado called Laws. We have worked at this company before. They have bid twelve thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars and forty-four cents for three of the vehicles, and the fourth one, which is an unmarked vehicle that will be used for investigations, that bid was six thousand seven hundred and ninety-three dollars sixty-five cents. I am requesting that we accept the bid from Laws out of Inglewood, Colorado, for a cost not to exceed fifty-four thousand dollars. The estimated or the bid amount is forty-three thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents. Part of the reason why I'm asking for not to exceed that amount, every so often when it comes to outfitting vehicles, there's might be some equipment that's not longer made or in inventory that they could purchase to keep consistent among the four vehicles. So sometimes that cost might vary. In addition to, part of our additional capital improvement plan is to begin installing actual twenty-first century stuff called in-car computers, stuff that we've probably about twenty years behind the curve on this. We have the ability to enter, to put in some equipment that wasn't part of the bid, and if we could get that installed and still be under the fifty-four thousand dollars, we'd like to do that as well. We won't know that until we actually get the vehicles on site and get those inputted, so my recommendation again is to accept the bid from Laws out of Inglewood, Colorado, not to exceed fifty-four thousand dollars. Are any questions? That's all I have.
You answered my question.
I had one question. I was just wondering why it was so much more expensive to do an unmarked vehicle as opposed to a marked vehicle?
There's a lot more, yes, there's a lot more equipment that goes into the, um, marked vehicles. Um, the cage is a good example. And it's not just a, a cage, it's an actual seat that we utilize that one person could fit in it. It's much easier to get somebody physically into that, especially if they're non-compliant. Um, there's other additional, um, storage equipments that we utilize in there to include the graphics as well. So not uncommon to have, as you can see here, um, almost, uh, a twice amount. Um, i- it's within line with what other, um, companies have as well, but there's just so much more equipment that goes into a marked vehicle compared to an unmarked one.
That's what I would have suspected, but for three of them, it's only, or is it twelve thousand per vehicle and then three times that?
Correct, yes. I, I think I misstated. I said twelve thousand, but not the times three, yes.
All right, now I comprehend better. Thank you.
I had that same question. Hey, any other questions for Chief Chrome?
None from me, Your Honor.
With that, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to accept the bid from Laws not to exceed fifty-four thousand dollars.
Second.
I have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Kevin Lindell. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Chief. Next is presentation approving a change order with Martin Marietta for additional I bet you in this paving projects. Mr. Bynum Meyer.
All right, thank you. Good evening. Um, what you have here consider is a change order to a contract you recently approved for the twenty twenty strictly for streets projects. Uh, we were before you about a month ago and asked for approval to award about a one point five dollar contract to Martin Marietta, uh, to do various roads within the city. At that time, we talked about a new technology. We were going to pursue hot-in-place recycling on a couple of areas, the landmark, uh, trailer park subdivision and River Avenue. Uh, we were informed last week that the company that provides that technology is unable to complete that work this year due to COVID nineteen. Uh, they have two crews, one of them's down in Florida and the other one is in New Mexico. The Florida crew, just about all of them have COVID nineteen, and so they've been hospitalized or quarantined. So they weren't able to move that crew to Colorado. And then Mexico crew is asked to be quarantined for fourteen days before they can come to Colorado. So that's put them behind on other projects that they'd committed to in Colorado, primarily to the city and county of Denver. So that company is actually canceling all of their work in Colorado except for the city and county in Denver because they just can't get it completed this year. So we're bummed about that. We were really hoping to use that technology and, and get a few more roads done this year than, uh, that, then we will normally. So with that, uh, we've worked with Martin Marietta to utilize the existing unit prices we have in their contract and at least complete the work that we were going to do in landmark, uh, division. We can't finish Riverview Avenue. It's just, the unit prices are just high enough. Um, you know, with the rebuild versus this other technology that we can't complete it with the money we have. So we'll postpone that for a year, but we'll take the little bit of additional money that we will have and complete all of the concrete work. So that when we start projects up next year, we'll be able to complete Riverview. And we're really going to try to work with this company and get them, uh, back into Colorado next year and still utilize that tech, technology. Uh, we think that can save the, the citizens, uh, some money. We get a good road out of it, um, and we'll be able to stretch those dollars. We did do it this year. Um, unfortunately, so this change order, uh, would be nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars is what we're asking for. That will complete all the work in the landmark subdivision uh, this year and, uh, we'll just utilize the money we have for concrete work. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, uh, you have about that communication.
We're sorry about missing that out, but they can keep their virus out of the state.
Yeah, for sure.
Um, of course, you know what I'm going to ask you is if they have any money for all this stuff? I don't think that we, that they pass that infrastructure, um, stimulus money. But is that only for state agencies or would the, would cities be unable to get into any of that? Because I know when I was on council before, uh, in two thousand eight, I told Ron about that. We were able to get money from shovel-ready projects on account of the poor economy.
Yeah.
So if any of that stuff floats around, do you, you, do they let the cities know or anything about that?
Yeah, Lynn, that's a good question, and we do attract those things. Um, you know, we belong to several different groups, particularly, uh, the Colorado Asphalt Pavement Association. And, uh, you know, they inform communities of, uh, it's available. CML is another good resource for that. I've not seen anything come out as yet. Um, but we'll keep our.
But.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll keep our finger on that pulse, and if we, if we see some of those monies come up, uh, we'll certainly look to go after those.
Yeah. Especially if he does that, um, uh, you know, that's going to take a lot of work, but if he does that, um, zero balance to do all the infrastructure. But I don't know if that would, that would come down to cities or not. I don't know.
Steve, I have a quick question about public communication, and I always ask this about strictly for streets, but, um, after this change order, will we update like the website and about the new streets that will be included this year?
Yeah, we, we try to keep those maps up to date. We probably have a map right now that's out of date because we're not able to do all the roads that we anticipated. So we'll update that to show that we're going to do landmark, but not Riverview. And then, uh, yeah, we continue to try to keep those posted and up to date.
Thanks a lot, Steve.
You bet.
Any other questions for Mr. Bynum Meyer? Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to approve the change order with our contract with Martin Marietta, an amount of nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars, um, for additional paving.
Second.
Who did the second?
I did.
Mister low voice. You can always tell.
I think Brian got it.
Oh.
Uh, I couldn't tell whose voice it was first. I have a resolution by Allison Howe and a second by Brian Erdy Alice. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you all very much.
Thanks, Steve. Next is a presentation for bids for a columbarium expansion at the cemetery. Mr. Hamer.
Um, yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Um, in your packet, you should have a memo written by Matt Underwood, um, explaining the project a little bit, but we're looking to, um, expand the columbarium and get ready to, uh, put in an additional niche, um, and have room for growth. He's, he's at a point where he's worried in a year and a half or so, we're going to run out of spots um, in the existing unit. So this will be a cement slab, uh, fencing, light poles, um, basically an expansion of the existing columbarium. Uh, we went out to bid on February eleventh, had three different companies that joined in the, uh, onsite meeting and also bid, uh, the project, the low bid was Elrich Construction at sixty-eight thousand five hundred. So we're seeking approval to, to go with them and accept their bid. Um, we do want counsel to understand um, that we, we will be spending, um, more than that on the entire project uh, with the additional funds. We'll want to go out to bid and actually buy a new niche. Um, and there may be some other services that we need, like, uh, crane service and things like that when it comes time to put in the new niche. Um, but tonight, we're looking to approve the general contractor, um, of Elrich Construction at sixty-eight thousand five hundred. Yeah, any questions?
So this is just going to be for the concrete, um, replacing the wrought iron fencing and wrapping it for the, uh, niche to be set?
Yeah, this does not include the niche. Um, we'll go out to bid for a new niche later on. Um, but this will include basically, it expands it to the, to the west, I guess. Um, I don't know the exact square footage of how big it's going to be. Um, but if you've been over there, there's a little water tap and a flower garden, um, so it'll be kind of in that area. Uh, we'll reuse some of the fencing that gets taken out, uh, but there'll also be additional fencing put in. It's a stamped concrete. It needs to be extra thick because of the, uh, of the niches and, and, you know, the vehicles that go in there to put the niche on, um, and it's a decorated concrete. So uh, this is just the infrastructure sort of, of the project.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Hammer?
Other than that is so nice over there. The people, it's really popular. It's not popular to get in there, but it's, it's really a nice place and it looks beautiful all the time. I think everybody really appreciates it, so.
They have a really good crew over there. Um, Matt's done a great job to get it organized and kind of get them a, a solid turf management plan and a routine to keep it in good shape. They're, they're doing a great job.
That's my favorite place to ride my bike. I, I have, I have, uh, um, Reserve Ground over there. No, it's, it is a very, it's very nice. I, we consider it, you know, one of the parks, actually. It's just, it's very, very nice. Been a lot of re, history research over there.
Yep.
It, it looks really very nice. You do a nice job.
I'll pass that along to the guys.
Are any other questions for Mr. Hammer?
None for me.
Okay. With that, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer, uh, a resolution on bids for a columbarium expansion at the cemetery. I don't have the amounts with me.
Sixty-eight, five.
Okay, thank you.
To Elrich Construction, ninth second.
Yes.
I used to have my computer to look at that. And I, so all I did was print out my agenda, so.
I have a resolution by Lynn Deal, a second by Kevin Lindell. All in favor? Aye.
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 All oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next is a presentation on bids for a restroom at Brenda Joy and Optimus Park. Mr. Hammer.
Okay, so good evening. Um, in your packet, you should have, uh, Doak's memo. Um, but this is a project to install, um, two different pre-cast restrooms, one at Optimus Park where we've, um, added the new tennis courts and pickleball courts, and we see a pretty high usage over there now. Um, and then also a restroom at Brenda Joy where we put the skateboard park and the bike park in. Um, these two units will be basically identical. They're, uh, his and hers units, but they are just, um, single toilets in each units, but there will be a men's and women's side, uh, fully ADA compliant. Um, we went out to bid, um, I think on March sixth, um, anticipated getting at least two bids, um, contacted several companies and for whatever reason, CXT, which is a company we've used in the past, uh, did not submit a bid. The only company that submitted for this project was UBC Pre-Cast Concrete at a hundred and fourteen thousand nine hundred. Um, Doak is pretty confident that that's a reasonable price and would have been relatively similar to the other company that we've used in the past. Um, so tonight, we're asking for approval to go with UBC pre-concat, or pre-cast concrete products um, in the amount of a hundred fourteen thousand nine hundred. This will install both bathrooms. Try to describe the location for you. The Optimus bathroom will be, uh, Brent, that's right off the east side of the parking lot, right? It's, it'll be just off the east side of the parking lot in Optimus.
Yes.
And then at, uh, Brenda Joy, um, the bathroom will kind of be to the northeast corner of the basketball court. So, um, in some dirt area between the skateboard park and the basketball court. Um, we've got a pretty easy, uh, stretch to run the water line there as well as the sewer on that side. So that's where we're going. We had hoped to be able to also, uh, put in some additional parking spots at Brenda Joy this year. Uh, but there won't be enough budget for that. We've got a hundred and twenty thousand budgeted um, in the Conservation Trust account this year for this project. Um, and so we'll put off the extra parking lot for now, uh, get the bathroom done. And if we have to in the future, we'll convert that basketball court into parking in the future if we need to, um, and move some of the features that are on the court is kind of the, the current plan, and that's why we, we wanted to use that location for the bathroom, and it just turned out that was actually the easier side of the park, um, to hook into sewer and water. So that's the plan. Uh, if you have any questions, go ahead.
Hi.
Yep.
I have a question.
Okay.
Um, does that include, uh, I guess, lack of better terms, uh, bat proof? Drinking.
Yeah, so there'll be an ADA fountain on the outside in between the two doors.
Okay. I would just, the complaints is, I think this side, the tracks of pad is naughty, you know, had, so I just wanted to make sure we include that.
Yep, so they'll both have potable water and they'll have ADA compliant drinking fountains on the outside of the building. Um, we'll have shut-off valves so it can all be turned off in the winter. And we're looking for some kind of locking mechanism on a timer or something for the doors, um, just to try to keep the building secure at night. You know, I think that was a problem with some of the old bathrooms was vandalism and destruction in the old restrooms, and that's why they're gone now. Um, so we're going to try to come up with that solution as well.
Good. So Ty, we're going to go as far as putting in hot water heaters and hand dryer, electric can dryers in these?
Um, I don't, I think there is a small water heater in them. Brian, I, I'd have to double check. Um, but we are doing hand dryers, I believe, not paper towels.
Okay, yeah, just showing you here in parentheses. And you keep saying ADA compliant. When are they going to have ADA parking over there?
Good question. Um, I know when we do the street on Comanche this year, we'll be adding some ADA, um, ramps, is that what they're called, Steve, on the sidewalk? Um, so that will help.
Um, yes, we'll be, we'll be installing or upping ADA handicap ramps at corners. Uh, we're required to do that whenever we repair a street, so those will go in as part of our work.
I, I would assume when we, if we have the money next year, we can do the additional parking next year. Um, we can always put in ADA spots, so we could probably paint one in there right now in the little, it's not a cul-de-sac, but the, the.
Dead end.
Dead end, yeah.
Okay.
Hadn't thought of that. That's a good question.
I think off-street, uh, off-street parking over there would be great because that place is getting used tons and it's just spilling over.
Yeah, and I had hoped, um, initially, Brian, to be able to do all that this year. Um, but I just don't, we don't have the budget right now.
I think the bathrooms and the water will be nice.
Yeah, I think it'll be a good start, and it won't be a huge project to convert the basketball court. Um, it'll just be some cement work and a driveway in the future, you know, and maybe some curbing or something. So we could probably get it done next year. Uh, we'll just have to plan for it.
Perfect. Thanks, Ty.
Yep.
Hey, any other questions?
None for me.
Nope.
Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution, oh.
Thank you, Kevin.
Uh, I'd offer a resolution that we accept the bid from UBC Precast Concrete Products in the amount not to exceed a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for two precast, precast concrete restrooms.
Second.
Thank you.
Resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by Clint Anderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Ty. Next is a presentation on bids for the twenty twenty Water and Sewer Underground Infrastructure Projects. Mr. Nation?
Okay, good evening, everybody. So what you have in front of you is all of the, uh, underground infrastructure work that we need to do, um, ahead of, um, the paving, um, contracts and that we've been talking about. Um, one of these that is on here is, um, specifically in the trailer park that was addressed in tonight's change order, um, for paving. So what we typically do is we identify areas that we need to go in and, um, replace water lines. And we break those out into different sections. And so in our bid, you'll notice that we have, different parts of town and we have all these projects that are labeled and that's, that's Eric's way of keeping those projects different. So when we have contractors jumping around, we know where we're specifically talking to. Um, what we found out too is that when we bid this many underground projects, sometimes it's advantageous for us to go ahead and look at using multiple contractors when we award these bids. Uh, that's what we did last year. If you, uh, for those of you that were on council, remember, um, and that's what we're looking at again doing this year. Um, so when we went out to bid, we actually had, um, four companies that bid on all of this. Three of them are local. Uh, one of them was from out of town, um, out of Lakewood, came out, bid on all these. Um, and as we kind of expected, you know, the local guys were able to come in as the low bidder on, um, the majority of these. And so what Eric's doing is that they're making a request that we split up these amongst our three local, um, contractors again. We want to give the majority of them to our two lowest bidders and then bring in, um, the third one to handle, uh, it's a, one of the sewer projects. It has to do with the, the reason we would bring them in is they're a little more specialized to, do a sewer main replacement on a line that's still being actively used. Uh, the two other sewer mains that are listed in this, um, in these projects are new extensions. And so you don't have to worry about, uh, existing wet taps and things like that when you're doing the work. And so, so with all that said, um, we're looking for approval, um, to have Ransom Boom, um, complete the work for infrastructure projects A and E in an amount not to exceed two hundred and fifty-two thousand. And to accept the bid from Darren Nebb Excavating to complete water projects B, C, and D, and sewer projects G and H, an amount not to exceed three hundred and fifteen thousand. And then to accept the bid from Jess Backo to compete, to complete sewer project F in an amount not to exceed forty-six thousand. Uh, we think with all three of those contractors working, we can stay, um, ahead of Steve's pavers and get everything done. And we're still getting, um, obviously we work with all of these guys all the time anyway, and they do very good work for us. And so they'll be able to keep us on track and, and give us a good number for the work being done. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Sounds good. I, I had a, a man ask me, he lives on Balsam. And I, I didn't know what to say because he asked me, evidently, it was scheduled, it's been scheduled before and then rescheduled. That's what, he said it was scheduled to do that and then they, rescheduling it to leave them out. So I said, well, I'll check. I didn't know.
Okay, over on Balsam, it may be one of our sewer line, or sewer relining projects. Um, so I would have to check with Eric, but I'm guessing that's probably what it is. Um, we okayed that contract a couple of meetings ago where we go in and reline the insides of those sewer mains to make them last longer. And he may be in one of those areas and that contractor, you know, we're having to work with everybody's schedule because of COVID nineteen and everything. So, um, I'll, I'll check with Eric on that one and.
Kirk is, uh, is watching and he put a note in the chat, hopefully Balsam Waterwork will be next year, or Eric's.
Oh, okay, so it is a water project. Okay.
Uh, what, when people ask me that kind of question, then what's a good, uh, obviously there's a reason why you do change stuff. So I, what I try to say, so you can correct me if this is wrong, but I say sometimes they like to get in and do the base work first before they do other work and then, if something, because you told us this, sometimes a water line will crash out when you didn't expect it to.
Yeah, and, and so what we do is in the off-season, we sit down with the Streets Department and, and we go through the, the, the computer program that lists out the roads that are the priority to do the paving on. And so that's where we begin our discussions between the Water Department, Sewer Department, which is Eric Sagal, and then JW at the Streets Department. And me and Steve are in that meeting and we sit down and everybody starts to look at the list and say, okay, these are the streets that are prioritized because we know via this, um, testing that these are the ones that need to be done. This is where they fall. Then Eric will bring in his list of, we have water lines that are showing a lot more breaks. In some situations, we have streets that all of a sudden, in one summer, we'll end up with three or four breaks through a section. And so then we ask JW and Steve, can we move that one up in any fashion? If we can't, we'll just go ahead and do the water line and then just put a patch in the middle of the road. But if it's close enough for needing replacement under Steve's program, we'll go ahead and roll it into the program and make adjustments. And so, it, depending on the amount of breaks that we see in the water line, it may force it up to get replaced sooner than we anticipated.
Well, I try to, because I'm sure you don't just hop around and say, well, we don't want to do this when we want to do the.
No, we try to do all of the critical ones first and address the ones that we're having the most trouble with.
Okay, and I know this was told to us, but I forgot. Um, and people are starting to ask me now, what, what work is being done on Platte Avenue? I think that state work is.
Yeah, that's, that's state work. That was a state bid project. It's a two-year-long project where they're doing the curb and get, some curb and gutter repairs, and then there'll be overlaying asphalt on that eventually. So, yeah, that is a seagull project.
They went through brush a few years ago, well, maybe even last year. So they're going to be, we're going to have that for quite a few, probably this summer then.
Yes.
Okay, that's the state and they're doing curb and gutter, and then they're going to do an overlay.
Yes.
Okay, I'll remember this time. I kind of have it, but I thought, oh, great jerk. People ask you a lot of questions. You feel kind of stupid when you tell them. Well, you're on the council, aren't you?
Feel free to have people call us, Lynn. We can, we can help them out.
I always say, I'll check.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Nation?
Oh, it has there been a lot of, has there been with, uh, with all this toilet paper? Have you guys have had any trouble with any backups or clogging?
Uh, we've been able to stay ahead of anything. We found early on, um, with some of the toilet paper issues. You know, there was some notices. We have some areas that we know to check just because they're, they're problem areas. And we've been able to prevent there from being any type of issues within our system.
It was on Facebook, so that was good. And then I passed it on too.
Yep.
But it is, it's out there, so.
Yeah.
I just wanted to ask you. I hadn't talked to you about it. Okay.
Okay. I would entertain a resolution if there's no other questions.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to approve the bid from Ransom Boom Excavating for projects A through E, not to exceed two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. To accept the bid from Darren Nebb Excavating for projects B, C, and D. Um, G and H not to exceed three hundred and fifteen thousand, hundred thousand dollars, and to accept the bid from Jess Backo for project F not to exceed forty-six thousand dollars.
Second.
Second.
Good job.
A resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Brian Erdy Alice. All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed, same sign?
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Brent. Next is public comment and audience participation for any items not on the agenda.
If there's anybody who would like to speak and you're muted, just please put a note in the chat. Not seeing any.
Okay. Moving forward, reports by officials and staff. Mr. Nation?
Um, I got just a few things that I wanted to throw out there for everybody. With everything that's going on right now with COVID nineteen and this new world that we're all learning to live in. Um, we continue to field some phone calls from our area businesses, you know, looking for where they can find help. Um, we've tried to, you know, streamline a lot of the federal assistance paperwork and everything. If, um, business owners go to the city website, uh, you'll see some links onto that. And, um, Sarah through the Economic Development Office has put a bunch of good, very good information on there. And is trying to keep as much on there for people as possible. She's reaching out to businesses as much as she can to help them with that when they have specific questions. And so we would encourage anybody that, um, if they've got, um, some business questions and some of these grants that they're handing out, what to do, go ahead and check out our website if they need, you know, someplace to jump to. Um, we also have had a few questions about, um, utility related, um, the shut-off issue and everything. The city of Fort Morgan is following the state directive that was handed down by the governor. We are not shutting off anybody, um, from their utilities based upon this, um, crisis that is currently going on. So I just wanted to make that clear. So you guys knew that we were following that directive. It was something that, um, internally as staff, we had discussed before the governor handed it down and decided that that was something we were going to do anyway. So, um, just kind of went hand in hand then with his directive that was handed out. And so, so, um, other than that, we're all living with the new norm and learning how to, you know, do business by Zoom and, um, trying to keep up with all the, the state meetings that seem to be out there. And so, but other than that, I don't have anything directly for you tonight, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank goodness for Mr. Nelson.
Yeah, this is great. Have you, have you heard anything from CML? Have they talked about, because that's in June. I'm kind of wondering if that's going to happen.
I think they still have their fingers crossed.
Yeah.
Haven't made any call on that yet, but.
They do, um, they would delay it. They wouldn't cancel it if it happens.
Well, I love that.
Okay. You have any others? Have an update?
Guess not.
Okay. Bids, Zooms, and announcements.
That's about right. Um, there's three bids out right now. Um, sealed bids for a front-end wheel loader until three P M on April ninth. Uh, sealed bids for one sixty-four niche columbarium unit until two forty-five P M on April tenth. And bids for a fifteen hundred KVA pad-mounted transformer until three P M on April twenty-second. Uh, the meeting calendar, as you mentioned, is pretty much, um, very tentative at this time. The only one that, at this point seems certain is the next City Council regular meeting on, uh, April twenty-first, which will be another online virtual meeting. And just a couple of quick announcements. The, um, Rec Department Youth Soccer Program has been canceled because of the ongoing, restrictions on gatherings and so on. Um, full refunds have been applied to, uh, patron accounts in their, um, their recreation active net accounts. And also the museum is asking residents to submit their stories or images or kind of experiences with the COVID nineteen pandemic and, uh, with a, an eye toward possibly having a, uh, future exhibit about the impact in Morton County from, uh, through the eyes of residents.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is an executive session for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and/or instructing negotiators under CRS Section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four E. And the following additional details are provided for identification purposes, economic incentives. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Still moved.
Second.
Is that you, Lynn?
Yeah.
Have a motion by Kevin Lindell and a second by Lynn Deal. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? We will disconnect and go into executive session.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.